Tell me when. January twenty eighth meeting of the Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Farkas.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber.
Present.
Councilman Legati.
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Here.
Councilman Revolinski.
Here.
And the mayor is absent, council president, that means we have six present.
Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of the holding of this regular business meeting of the Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting filing and forwarding of a copy of the same to the official borough newspapers, Home News Tribune and Starlager Publishing Companies on January tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Next, moment of silence and salute to the flag, we will dispense with these items until the regular meeting. Next are on the agenda's items for discussion. Number one is Jersey Waterworks Municipal Outreach Asset Management and Finance.
Yes, Council President Dixon. I had put this on the agenda just to update people, I am a part of the Jersey Waterworks State Committee, and we have a municipal outreach toolkit which I'll share to the mayor and council, outreach about the organization and things to, you know, improve on the municipalities, with collaboration with others. We also have developed a task force, and that is the lead in drinking water task force. This came down from the governor's office, so they decided to form with state agencies, EPA, DEP, to join, do a task force in order to provide solutions for lead and water, particularly the water to the main for residents, on programs that would be available, maybe some funding in the future. So, once that information becomes available, I will share that. And they haven't met yet, this is the first time, they will be probably meeting next month. And asset management and finance, they have a toolkit as well for this option for financing on water infrastructure, also the importance and the growing need, plus there are many grants out there trying to get your assets, you know, managed and also assessed. So, I'll share that information as well, and they are working on work plans this month and next month with their meetings, as well as March. And the green infrastructure task force, they do have several options out there, the Green Infrastructure Champion Training starts Friday, there are many people who signed up on one of them, and it's two other dates, involves, you know, divesting into what green infrastructure is, how to get municipalities more involved in the stormwater solutions, and professionals collaborating with people in town, be it some residents or businesses as well, to address those issues, as you know, because of flash flooding and previous surfacing, et cetera. So, and also, they will assist us in writing, or at least guiding us with writing more grants, which are becoming more plentiful, and I will have that coming at the February meeting. And that concludes Jersey Waterworks.
Thank you, Council.
May we ask questions about that?
Sure.
So, for Jersey Waterworks, how long have you been involved in that?
Since two thousand fourteen, fifteen.
So, and there's the same type of financing and stuff, they've been sharing that information for four or five years now?
Well, they've, well, it's similar, but then also, some of the municipalities, they provide a better kind of loan system or grant system to them.
Oh, because, to be honest, I haven't heard of it, you know, so I'm wondering, you know, have we done anything to use them before?
I think last, no, we haven't, however, I will share that information, I think it was last October, they just finally finalized the programs for municipalities.
Okay, yeah, that would be very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda's the Complete Streets Update.
Yes, the Complete Streets Update is, we are scheduling the next meeting to make a final plan in terms of what we will do, a mock implementation for Church and Main Street and Fordham Main Street. We postponed the meeting because the county engineer was not available, so we're trying to firm that up for next week or the following Monday, February eleventh, and hopefully we'll have that available. And what we will do, once it's been mock implemented, that's the way they call it, we will get feedback from, you know, the public, of course, from us as well, and see how things are working. If not, we'll, you know, unless we'll be implemented in the spring, it's not going to be implemented in the wintertime, they'll do it in the springtime, and then we'll go from there until we decide everything's okay, and then we'll do a final implementation at that point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Millsix County Health and Wellness Council.
Yes, I attended the meeting last Tuesday, it's second Tuesday of the morning of Friday's, I mean, second Tuesday, and we did the nominating committee, so we're getting our officers in place, board members in place, anyone can certainly sign up and represent the town. Right now, I represent Milltown, there's several other people that represent other towns, but they're looking for more, they've reached out to the mayors and councils, and hopefully, health departments will participate, they will, we'll see more of a presence now that our bylaws have been approved at the December twentieth meeting, and once our committee is in place. And we will share more information and have a link hopefully on our website when we have more of a presence to the county site.
Thank you, Council. Next, we'll have Office on Aging Lunch and Learn.
Yes, this year I started a lunch and learn, and then my first lunch and learn was Milltown Trivia, and I came up with several questions, I pulled the information from either the website or the books that were written, and everyone enjoyed it, we had a nice little lunch, that was really beneficial, so I am continuing this, and hopefully any other topics that we want to discuss or have fun with, that's going to be like once a month, and it was really well attended, and I look forward to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, Grants.
For the February meeting, I'll have three grants as a resolution, hopefully. We will present the Sustainable Jersey, the Green Team is interested in supporting the Complete Streets program, so in order to be able to do that, we are going to apply for the ten thousand dollar grant, and we also have a Land Conservation of New Jersey grant, as well as a third grant, which I can't recall the organization, it's more towards green projects, your parks, or open space projects, the other two grants, but the details will be at the February meeting, I just wanted to let you know what would be forthcoming, and we can decide what projects we want to do. We have some design work provided to us from Rutgers already, which can be implemented, which we'll show and share to the engineer to confirm that everything is okay on some of these projects for stormwater management, and then go from there.
Thank you, Council. Next, we'll have a discussion of procedure for the potential sale of the Milltown Public Utility.
Thank you, Council President. I asked to have this put on because I am the chair of the Utilities Committee this year, Councilwoman Revolinski did a nice presentation at the end of last year about the pitch from American Water, and since then, I've gotten several questions from people, when are we selling, what are we doing, have, and we had a really nice discussion at that meeting about next steps, so I just wanted to bring this up tonight to the full council and to the public, to let you know that, you know, it's going to take a lot of due diligence to, before we even can entertain the sale, and, you know, I've spoken to the engineer about it, you know, it takes a full evaluation of our system, it also, there are a lot of other things that need to be investigated before, and, you know, when we had the meeting the last time, the mayor had talked about doing a committee, and so it's, you know, we've a month or two out, it's not that we've totally taken this off the table, it's just that it's going to take a little while to investigate all of the options. So, when it comes time to do one or the other, we will certainly, you know, keep you informed, let you know, but, you know, the council has to decide too, just to even investigate it, we're going to have to spend money to do an evaluation, so we have to decide what our comfort level is on spending just to go out and kick the tires of this, so that's a discussion that will come, you know, at some time, as, and also, as I spoke with Mike, we will have a Utilities Committee meeting, we'll get together with him, with the Director of Utilities, to go over all the possibilities, but since a lot of people have been asking or wondering when the sale is going to happen, I just wanted to put this on and say, nothing is going to happen right away, and so if you have any questions, you know, stay tuned, we'll be addressing the utility issues, and I'll keep you informed as the process goes on.
It's very early in the procedure.
Exactly, yeah, we really, and, you know, the BA, Mr. Barr has been helpful, and, you know, we're looking into what other towns have gone through, we're going to have to compare prices on what it would cost for the evaluation, and sort of do a real dive into the whole thing before we, as a council, would then say, okay, yes, we're going to go ahead and explore this, or no, we're going to wait a little while and decide to go another route. So, we're, the Utility Committee met the other night, well, you know, that wasn't the big issue, but we will, you know, start working on it as the year goes on, but, you know, a month later, we have a lot of more stuff to take a look at, so I just wanted to let everybody know, and then if you have any questions later on, I'd be happy to speak to you about.
This issue did come up at the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
Because, and I asked it.
Good, appreciate.
Because people were asking me.
Right.
And the reason I asked was people wanted to know if we were getting out of the water utility business, you know, when it would happen, and it was discussed in, I think the earliest that, based on what I think the BA and the auditor said, it's probably, if you were ready to go tomorrow, it's like an eighteen-month process.
Yeah, easy.
Easily, so wherein, we will continue to be the town's water supplier for two thousand and nineteen, which was the question I was getting from residents, are we going to be, you know, is Milltown going to still do it in two thousand and nineteen, and that ship has sailed, Milltown will still do it no matter what we decide, yes or no, so that process would take even longer than two thousand and nineteen, just to clarify for anybody who's listening or watching out there, that it, it's at least into two thousand and twenty that this would change, wouldn't even happen.
Right, right, and also to find out, the finance would be aware of the cost of the evaluation as well, where that's coming from, right?
I did speak to, to one engineering firm so far, asked them for just a ballpark, you know, kind of off-the-cuff budgetary number, I did get a name of two other engineering firms who have done these sort of evaluations within the state, really, there's not many that have done it or do it as a standard practice, and I think we'd be behooved to go with someone who has gone through this process a few times, knows what to look for, and could compare their estimates to what eventually the offer was made to the townships, were they very high, were they very low?
Right.
Were they, were they pretty much in line with the bids or RFPs that came in for a sale? So, I'll pass that information along, I also have a sample RFP for us to look at that was sent over, and as far as the timeframe goes, we will have to, if we're serious about really looking into this, the whole council should be aware that we need to make sure we have the finances in place to do the evaluation this year, because if we don't, and that gets pushed till two thousand and twenty, we're looking at not even going out for RFP for sale if we choose to go that route until two thousand and twenty-one, so.
Correct.
We just keep kind of kicking that can further down the road, so I think we're at a point now where we should, you know, if we feel like this is a good thing, we should, you know, put our money where our mouth is, and at least go for the evaluation, and one of the other things with the evaluation was, we can also have them develop something of a capital improvement plan in conjunction with what CME has also provided over the years, and compare the costs associated with that, that you can truly get an evaluation of the value of your system now, as well as what you would anticipate spending over the next several years, and along with the auditor, what sort of tax impact or rate impact that would have, and then, you know, versus the potential of if we unburdened ourselves with the, with the sale of the system, so.
Right, well, that's, yeah, so that's why I've asked for a meeting with the auditor for our committee, the Utility Committee, and hopefully that will happen in February, because that's the next important step, and of course, Mike is a good resource for the, you know, he's been working with our water, and just to clarify, Rich, it's just water, right, not water and sewer?
Well, it would be water and sewer, because, well, I would suggest that we go water and sewer, because our sewer rates are based on our water, so it would be kind of silly for us to maintain control over our sewer system when what's going into the sewer system is beyond our control.
Right, no, I just, I think people were unclear when it came, when we were talking about it at the last meeting, so that's why I just wanted to clarify that it's water and sewer.
And sewer, yeah, because we've got the forced main project that we'll have to take a look at coming up, as well as maintenance of our pump stations, and I will say that I was actually approached by several residents as well, and some of them seemed optimistic, their friends or family live in towns that have private water companies, and they said, you know, it just seems to make sense. I do want to add one more thing to the utility that we did not discuss yet, but if you recall last year, a woman came in and had mentioned that, due to the month at which she is billed, and I think all the residents can understand this, is that your bill is a three-month bill, and we have tiers, so if your bill happens to fall in the three months, or covering the three months at one time, or under one bill, which are the max-use months, your July, August, and whether it's June, but you get that bill, you're going to have the highest, compared to anyone else who, even though they're being billed for the same time period, because the bill is generated in July instead of August, they're not hitting that high peak, so I think something that we should look into this year as a committee, especially before, typically when we do any sort of rate changes, they occur in April, is look at if we can shift the billing period for this coming year by thirty days, so the people that were hit hardest last year are now, you know, thirty days back or thirty days forward, so they don't get hit with the same three-month high that they were hit with last year, and that kind of, you know, we can rotate through the system so that the June, July, August bill falls on every one in town through the course of a three-year period, if that makes sense.
So, that's one of the things that I thought we were going to talk about with the auditor, with our committee, as to whether we could do, you know, look at monthly billing, you know, how to, how to make it more fair for the majority of people, since it was, it seemed like it was a hardship last summer, so that's, you know, something that we have to talk about to get in place before.
Typically, we do those rate changes in April, if there is a rate change, so it's good if we get that, our ducks in a row by then.
Yes, to take, well, and with the auditor too, to take a look at the tiers and all of that, we'll take a second look at it to see how it's, what we did last year, how that affected the water sewer budget, and then see where we're looking to go for the next year.
Yeah, and I think, it's my understanding that our, the increase last year, the rate increase actually did generate the revenue desired, to help offset that lapse that we had in the budget, so it looks like it did its part, but we definitely have to talk to the auditor this year about.
Right, right, so I actually.
What impact we're going to have this year.
Spoke to Mr. Barr, and we're going to try and get on a meeting with Jerry Stankowitz sometime in early February, right, Brandon?
Correct.
Good, thank you, yeah, because that'll, that'll answer a lot of questions, and again, you know, we can't do, move forward until we see some of the, answer some of these questions to talk about what the next steps are going to be, and we'll, we'll speak to Mike and John, the Utility Department head as well, before that.
Mr. Barr, did that increase hit all of its potential points that it was supposed to, or not?
The, the increase did hit the, the revenue that we were projecting, and just hit it, I mean, we didn't get a huge surplus, we didn't get a huge deficit or anything, it was right, right on the mark, if you will, you know, there are some expenditures that we're going to need to look at in the Finance Committee, you know, obviously, one of the expenses that we're talking about up here, you know, and can it fit the utility budget, and what will it do to impact the fees and so forth, so that's going to be the next topics of conversation with the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And wasn't, another discussion is, if New Brunswick raises their rates to us?
Correct, correct.
Which could happen this year?
They have an increase already in place for two thousand and nineteen, we're still waiting for documentation from them after our meeting, I guess that was about two weeks ago now, they did get back to us and indicated that there, it was a larger issue than what they could handle, so, or what they thought it was, so they're talking to their engineering department who handles the solid waste side, and.
Okay.
The water, the water side is more straightforward, it's number of gallons times a rate, the solid waste side is a little more convoluted because of the, if you will, the shore-up costs at the end of the year, that they get through Millsix County Utilities Authority.
Right, okay, so that's another thing that we'll have to be aware of.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, miscellaneous engineering items, Mike?
Yes, Council President Dixon, just a few things to go over tonight. Realize you have a heavy agenda here. First on our list, as you may remember, we received bids for Wilson Avenue Phases Two and Three, we've been discussing the work with the apparent low bidder, it appears he may have some issues with his bid, and we've asked him to resolve that, and, but informally, he's suggesting that he may request to be let out of his bid, we will coordinate with the borough attorney and keep it advised accordingly, even if you go to the third low bidder, the change in, in dollar amount is four or five thousand dollars, not significant, we're not sure the second low bidder is prepared to do the job either, so we will know more in the next couple of days. We're happy to report that the third low bidder, though, appears to have bid to project the way the borough would ask, which would be the drill through the, through the hill rather than open cutting it, and he's indicated the subcontractor that typically does that work around it, so we will advise at your next meeting, once we hear more from the two, two bidders, the second, the first and the second. Next on our list is to just update you about work at the Public Works Complex, as you know, the construction of the retaining walls has started up again, I think middle of the park last week, weather got better, they're moving some earthwork still, and basically, that's, that's the work going on, not much else yet, but I was over there, not to, to look at the job the other day, and it appears that the, most of the soils that were stockpiled in the center of the job are, have been removed, the benefit there is when you do ultimately start your building, that soil is not in the way of the construction of buildings. Water tank rehabilitation, no change in that, we advised last meeting that middle of February, the contractors should be starting, he's going to put basically what's going to look like a curtain around the tank, scaffolding and a curtain, which basically prevents when the removal of the paint, the paint doesn't fly over the parking lot, all the cars in the Home Depot and Target, you would be surprised how both paint chips and paint will travel, the wind can cause amazing things when you're up hundred fifty feet in the air, so that's why he's been required to contain those removals, including the blast lag when he blasts, so that, that should, you should see that curtain going up, hopefully by the middle of next month.
With regard to that, Mike?
Yes.
Did we find out?
It was not, it was not our contractor, it was, appears to have been one of the antenna companies, they appear to have gone in on their own without permission from the borough, they do have access, I believe, to the tank site, because that's their antennas, and they were working there without permission from your supervisor and ours, so it just, it was one of those things that happens, unfortunately, or fortunately, no one was hurt, but the message went out, that in no circumstances does anybody do that any longer. Okay, so it was not your contractor.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Now, open it for audience comments. If any member of the public wishes to speak, any of the items that were listed on the agenda meeting, please step forward, say your name and address for the record, these comments are limited to items discussed at the agenda meeting.
Phil Zambrano, forty Van Lu Avenue, so what I wanted to ask, since it was brought up in conversation during the agenda committee, was, we don't know what the rates are for two thousand and nineteen for New Brunswick yet for water?
That from New Brunswick.
Can I just intercede here, because?
Mr. Barr can answer that.
What, what happens here, was Mr. Barr grappling with this, and I've been involved for some years, when MCUA gives the rate to New Brunswick, or to any entity that flows directly to them, they estimate, because obviously, at the beginning of the year, you don't know what your flow is going to be, so they estimate what your costs are going to be, and they ask what their costs are going to be, so at the end of the day, they do what's called a true-up, that's why New Brunswick is waiting for it, and that's why Mr. Barr is waiting for it, that true-up is essentially, they take a look at what the actual flows were versus what was projected, what their costs were, and they strike a budget, so it's similar, it's done in, in reverse, but that way you pay the actual, not what the estimated was, and that's what this true-up is all about.
And Mike, I think it's important to note that the true-up also involves the three different categories of flow, it's based on how much solids versus liquids versus volatiles, or some combination of those, so it may be the overall same volume, but it's, oh, you gave us more solids last year than you, than we anticipated, it costs more to treat the solids or to haul those off, so therefore, you got to pay us back for, for that.
So, does anybody have an estimated data when that true-up will be done, or finished? So, does anybody have an estimated data when that true-up will be done or finished?
They usually happen at the end of every year, and typically you're talking about January, February for most true-ups to occur.
So, you won't have an actual number to sort of use in your budget until the end of February or mid-March, is that what you're saying?
No, not necessarily. We have the rate for 2019, as I said. They did a three-year rate for 17, 18, and 19. We have estimates that we used, that they used, and we used for 2018, so we can move forward in doing estimated numbers. We won't know the actual numbers until they get back to us, which as I indicated, they're currently working on, and will get to us as soon as they can get those numbers together.
Again, does anybody have an estimate of when that's going to happen? Because this literally happens, I know this is your first year here, this literally happens year after year after year after year after year, and so you can't put together a number, you just stated that your revenue, it looks like you hit your revenue target with this increase that was placed, that was begun in April. So, it looks like you hit your revenue number, but you don't know what the increase is apparently, even though it's probably going to be two to three percent.
It could be a decrease.
Could be a decrease.
Could be a decrease, and it's happened.
You haven't had a decrease in like 10 years.
On sewer from MCUA, I'm not so sure, Phil.
I'm not talking by MCUA, I'm talking from New Brunswick.
Well, no, this is connected to the bill from New Brunswick. Because MCUA drops the number, then New Brunswick's bill drops accordingly. So, that's, it's, when they send the bill to the borough, it's calculated based upon what MCUA's charging, and there have been reductions.
But there's, no one has an idea of when that might happen?
Well, I think everybody's trying to tell you that we're as upset about the fact it takes a little longer, but they have, don't forget, there's millions of gallons that have to be categorized down at the county. They have many towns, many different.
Are they using like a calculator, you know, again, so again, we go through this year after year after year, and no one seems to, I don't know who here, whose responsibility it is to do that. Is it the BA? Is it the mayor? Is it the council president? Is the head of utilities? Like, who's like, hey, where's the number? What's taking you so long? Because the residents of Milton shouldn't have to wait until like the week before April when the new rate goes into effect, that it's going to go up 30%. That's what I'm trying to get at.
And unfortunately, Milton is not alone in this plight. Every entity that is subject to or contributes to the MCUA's flow has the same issue that they have to deal with. When it gets sent out by MCUA, it gets sent out to everybody at the same time.
Terrible excuse, thank you.
And it also depends though on how the borough handles it. So, if we get the increase from New Brunswick, we can either pass that on, or what, you know, what we've done in the past is not pass it on. And the BA and CFO have spoken about it, that part of the reason that we got to the big increase last year was that smaller increase over several years wasn't passed on.
Right.
So, that's something that the council will have to decide whether we want to make a policy that if it goes up 2%, then the rate goes up 2%, not, okay, we'll wait till the 2% happens over two or three years and then we'll raise it 10%.
Right, right.
So, that's something that we have to agree on with council from the BA, CFO, on how to handle those increases from New Brunswick.
January 31st is Thursday. You would think that by that time, all of this would already be taken care of. If you're in the finance or you're in the accounting business, whether it's an accrual, whether it's, whatever it is, whether it's a deferral, by this time, when you're working on a year-end, like Milton has, January to December, you should really have that number in, already sort of like baked in already. And if somebody's not giving you the information so that you can make that number or come up with an estimate, you basically should be emailing them and calling them every day. And if that doesn't happen, that's a problem.
Yeah, I understand finances, I understand accruals. I've been doing this for a couple of years, and I've been on the phone and emailing New Brunswick continuously, and I, in fact, they sent me an email on Friday, just letting me know that they still are working on it and will get back to us as soon as they can. Does it prohibit us from coming up with estimates of what those charges might be because of our past experience? We naturally have done that.
Like I said, let's see if we have this conversation in April and people will find out if their rates are going up, what their rate's going to be at in the week before April when they go into effect. That really is horrible, and there's something that should be done about it.
Now, Mr. Barr, could we get in front of some of the true-ups for 17 and 18 so that the public can realize what's going on, obviously, for maybe 16, because the contract was 17, 18, and 19? Is that right?
Correct.
So, 17 and 18, well, 17, we should have those numbers.
Yes, they're verifying that they have, that they do have those numbers correct. They did determine in our meeting that they failed to do the increase for 18, which I came here in July of 18 and didn't realize that they didn't do an increase, but we are aware of what it is for 19, and we're working with them to get those numbers confirmed and firmed up.
My point is, we're trying to get in front of it. We're not going to wait. You know, unfortunately, we're waiting on other entities, but I think Mr. Barr has explained to the finance committee that he's trying to get in front of it as best he can with the entities that are involved, so he's trying, we're trying.
It's interesting, because last year before Mr. Barr came on, we did have a meeting at New Brunswick, and it was revealed that the true-ups from the previous year, we kind of carried stuff over, we forgot to leave for 15 or 16, so we're adding it to this, which made it just everything compound to a greater number in 16 than it was just from 2015. It was actually from some other years that they said, okay, here's what it equates to, and then we fought that, so then in 17, they came back and said, here's everything you owe us, and we said, no, we still didn't agree to that, and that's, where it kind of compounds, instead of just, you know, addressing it each year. But you're absolutely right, we need those numbers to at least be able to somewhat predict. But I don't know if, Mike, and maybe you can shed some light on this, but when the county does this evaluation on the true-up, is it strictly based on the flow, and I'll say from New Brunswick, because we go to New Brunswick, New Brunswick goes to the county, is it just on what New Brunswick provided, or did they reevaluate everything based on what all the towns provided? So, if the MCUA as a whole collected more solids than anticipated, even though they didn't necessarily see more solids from New Brunswick, do they increase the rate of solids across the board because it costs more to haul away and dispose of, or to treat some of the other volatiles or whatever? Or do they say, no, that was the rate for solids that you guys agreed to, that's what you owe us, we're just giving you a final accounting?
You know, we don't do the calculation from MCUA, but the ones that I've seen, they do it mispberry by mispberry. They have a contract with, for example, let's take New Brunswick, that's really the key town here. New Brunswick has a certain amount of flow and they have a certain amount of rate for BOD, suspended solids, and chlorine demand. When they do the analysis year-end, they average them, whatever their agreement says, and that's how the bill is struck, based upon flow. So, then they take all this revenue in and they took a look at the costs, and they say, okay, here's what we're going to go through and do, here's what we need, here's what our projections are, that's how they do it.
But MCUA doesn't say, as a whole, this year we spent so much more in chlorine, so we've got to increase.
Well, it's the other side of ledger, gets, when they look at their costs and they compare them to what the revenues are, that's it, they just.
That's when they set an increase for the following years.
But solids, remember, at a water plant, it's not so much, the waste comes in, a wastewater plant handles the solids and treats it, but because the solids are more difficult to, really, it's suspended solids, they're more difficult to treat, so that's why they basically surcharge the higher solids. But it's not because, they basically treat it and send it out to the bank, so it's not like they're paying anything extra, just more cost for them to treat it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other audience comments? If not, I will let the council for a motion to adjourn the agenda meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion, everybody. Councilman Ravalinsky. We will adjourn and we will begin our regular business meeting, five minutes, five-minute
January twenty eighth meeting of Milltown Borough Council will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Dixon.
Present.
Councilman Farkas.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerber.
Present.
Councilman Lagotti.
Here.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Here.
Councilman Revulinski.
Here.
Mayor's absent, so Council President, we have six present.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the open public meeting statement?
Let the minutes reflect that adequate notice of holding in this regular business meeting. The Borough Council was provided by the adoption of a resolution and the posting, filing, forwarding of a copy of the same to the official borough newspapers, Home News Tribune, and Starlager Publishing Companies on January tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Public participation in this meeting will be permitted during public hearings and after the agenda of scheduled matters has been completed.
Thank you. Now have a moment of silence and ask the lead to the flag.
Flag for the Constitution to the fire of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have a public hearing. On the agenda, we have two ordinances for public hearing. The ordinances will need to be tabled for the February eleventh meeting due to a noticing requirement. I'm asking the council to entertain a motion to table these two hearings until the next council.
I make a motion to table these two public hearings until the next scheduled meeting of February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions and bills and claims. Any member of the public wishing to speak on the resolutions listed on the bill list, please step forward, say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions and bills and claims. Seeing none, moving on. Next, we have reports and standing committees and introduction of resolutions. Consent resolution has been prepared to cover the resolutions listed on the agenda. If any member of the council wants any resolution acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
Nineteen oh five two?
Nineteen oh fifty-five?
Uh, no, two. Oh five two.
Oh five two.
Are this, uh, go ahead.
Ron, can you, we do oh fifty-one as well?
Oh fifty-one? Will the clerk please read the consent resolution, which covers the resolutions listed on the agenda with the exception of nineteen oh five one, nineteen oh five two?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of the council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion that these resolutions be adopted.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Ask the clerk to read Resolution nineteen oh fifty-one by title.
I need a roll call on the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Need a roll call on the consent agendas.
Council President Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
Thank you. Now, will the clerk please read Resolution nineteen oh five one by title?
Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown authorizing a tax refund.
What is your pleasure? Move that this resolution be adopted?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Yes, Council President Dixon, I have nothing against this resolution. I just don't quite understand it. I'd like to know what it is I'm actually voting on so that I get a full understanding of it.
Certainly. The tax assessor approved a totally disabled veteran exemption for this property. That would mean that the person was disabled during time of conflict, if you will. They use different terminologies. They don't use war anymore. And what had happened is this person does have a mortgage company. While everybody was notified, it was too late to stop the quarterly payment for the first quarter. They made the first quarter payment, so now there's just refunding that quarter. This property is tax exempt going forward.
And my question would be, is there anything else we can do for this particular resident? Or this is?
I'm sure, I mean, this is what we can do as far as a municipality for if they qualify and they, there's a lot of steps to go through before they can get this totally disabled deduction. We do help people along with that process if we're, if we are aware of that. We tell them what they need to do, where they need to go, and so forth and so on. But I believe the person is fine. If they need any additional help, they'll go reach out.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, if I could answer one other question. After the meeting, I will give you some information that there's something coming up in February that would help this gentleman here within the borough.
That'd be great.
Thanks.
Randy, I'm just curious about that, and the same goes for nineteen oh fifty-two, which is why I asked for it. The tax, we got a vote here. Still during discussion, so the property owner doesn't have the tax liability, but are we then fully funded based on our tax rates by the federal government then for that? Or how does that?
The tax exemption for veterans where they are not charged any tax is basically picked up by the rest of the taxpayers within that taxing district. We do, we do not get refunds from the federal government or the state. If you get a veteran deduction or senior citizen deduction or disabled deduction, those are two hundred and fifty dollars per property if qualified. That the town gets a reimbursement from the state of New Jersey for those. So any kind of exemptions basically becomes a tax exempt property within the municipality, and the costs of operations for the schools, county, and municipality are then divided amongst the rest of the taxpaying properties.
Okay, so the exemption is nothing from the state or the fed, but a deduction is state support?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we know how many of the exemptions we have in town? Because I remember we just passed one a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I can get those for you. I don't, I don't have it tonight.
No, no, yeah, that's fine. Just wondering, you know, how many there are.
I'm guessing it's a, it's a real big process to go through to get this tax exemption.
Yeah, I think you first have to get a certification from the VA that you are disabled in the time of disablement. So because it has to happen at time of conflict. So somehow they have determinations that they could do with that. I'm not sure how you determine a couple of years ago, but they do have determinations. And once you get that certification, they tell you, go here, take this, go to your municipality, and you could get a tax exemption.
Okay, thanks.
Only the VA that can grant that.
Right.
Right, correct.
Only the VA. Your own personal doctor can say you're totally disabled.
Right.
Doesn't make a difference.
I guess if your doctor says you're totally disabled, they may suggest you go to the VA.
Right.
But only the VA can determine when that, if that occurred during the time of conflict.
So hypothetically, a person in this status could have been paying taxes for years and years and years and not known about it, but now is?
That is possible, and there is another possibility where they can be, being examined by the VA for a year or so. I've seen where they started a process, it took almost two years for it to finish.
So if they were injured in a time of conflict, this particular person has been paying taxes for years, I would assume.
Right.
Correct. And again, you don't know the, obviously you don't know the disability. They could have been, they could, they could have had some type of injury or something occur where now they become disabled, but it was because of that kind of conflict.
I don't want to get into it that fair.
And I think actually, according to our tax assessor, I had a discussion with her several months ago about this, and I think it only goes back to a certain amount of time. So like, it's only till the beginning of the prior year or so. They can't go back for twenty years and say, I've been paying it all along, and now Milltown gave me money. It's, we can limit it.
Correct. Okay.
Anyone just stand on what you said, anyone in VA care, their disability status is reviewed at least once a year, if not more.
Okay.
So a disability that could be caused, say, age and arc in Vietnam, as it escalates more, they evaluate to you're one hundred percent disabled.
And that's, that's like a perfect one where it may not show up for years afterward.
Exactly.
Initially where you got it during time conflict.
Thank you. Just, just for clarification, because it sounded a little funny, that is granted by the VA, the Veterans Administration, not the BA.
No, not the BA, thank you. The VA.
Just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Well, I appreciate it. I just, I needed to understand a little bit more, and I totally understand now, and I just thank you for the time for it.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk call the roll?
Council President Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
Thank you. Next, poll was, ask the clerk to read Resolution nineteen oh fifty-two.
Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown authorizing a veteran deduction and tax credit to the property.
Your motion?
I move that this resolution be adopted.
I second.
All in favor?
Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes, Council President, I ask that this be polled, but for previous discussion. I think we're all understanding of the difference between the two.
Aye. So I'll ask the clerk, if there's no further discussion, please call the roll woman.
Council President Dixon.
Aye.
Councilman Farkas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kerber.
Aye.
Councilman Lagotti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mayor.
Aye.
Councilman Revulinski.
Aye.
Council President, we have six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on.
You know, can I just ask one more question, if I may, and I know this is somewhat out of term, but getting back to what we just talked about, Mr. Bar, would you happen to know the answer to this? If it's a rental property and the person is fully disabled, but is renting the property, does it become tax exemptor now?
No, for a totally disabled veteran, you must live in the property. A spouse can receive a totally disabled, the widow of a totally disabled veteran, as long as they do not remarry and, and remain.
Remarry.
And, not remarry, and remain in the house. For a veteran deduction, you do not necessarily have to live in the property. You could apply for the deduction in a property that you don't live in, but you don't try and do it in multiple jurisdictions because you do get caught, and that is illegal.
Well, Mike, my question is really more about, let's say the gentleman was living in Milltown, but he didn't own the house. He was renting it. Could his landlord apply for the exemption?
Not for, not for the exemption, no.
Okay.
But he could apply for a deduction of the two hundred and fifty if he doesn't have it elsewhere in the state of New Jersey.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we'll have the Department of Meeting, uh, reports. First off is Department of Finance, Administration and Planning. I'm just chaired by myself. This evening I have two reports. First off, Department of Code Enforcement, Office of Emergency Management. The Department of Code Enforcement issued a total of twelve notices of violation specifically pertaining to sump pump discharges directed directly onto borough roadways. With the onset of much colder weather again later this week, be canvassing throughout the borough for additional violations, creating icing conditions as, as these sump pumps are pumping it directly into the street. Comprehensive borough wide survey of the borough has been conducted this past week at the request of the Borough Administrator pertaining to HUD requirements. The Office of Emergency Management will be scheduling our committee meetings in the coming weeks. Additionally, OEM is in the process of once again updating our municipal emergency operations plan and submitting it for approval to the county and state. Next. Next, I have, turn over to Mr. Bar on a report on the DPW and the Firehouse Project.
Yes, I think you, you heard Mr. McWellon that the contractors were back out, starting the twenty-third, just the time to come with the big freeze that we're gonna get over the next couple of days. But they were doing some minor site work of removing the stockpiles of soil, waiting for deliveries of some items such as lighting poles, bases, and site transformer. They have been delivered. We're still working on the easement from the adjacent property owner, and I do plan on having him attend the next meeting to go over some more, in greater detail, items of, that have been changed from the architect, from architect to architect, and start discussing possible change orders, or change order, I shouldn't say change orders, for the project.
Is that the report? Do you have them to pass out for us?
Now, last month, last month, we were told that the project was closed down for the winter, and that that was normal procedure during this time of year. What changed that it's not normal anymore and we started this project up again? Or is it just gonna shut down again?
I'm suspecting it'll, it'll shut down again. You know, if, if the weather is moderate and they can do some stuff, they will. If it gets too cold, where the, where the ground starts getting frozen and stoveware, they won't be able to do much. So I think they saw a couple of days, so they figured they, they get some of the work done. But I suspect towards the middle of this week, I don't see them out there again, because it's gonna be, you know, in the single digits.
So basically, the project is not shut down, and we don't know if it shuts down or when it shuts down?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say any project, as long as there is, there is okay, okay weather, I'm not saying gorgeous weather, okay weather, they could get some stuff done, they, they will. But if, if it's a very bad winter, if there's like heavy snow and it doesn't disappear, the project really gets shut down. So while we were thinking it was gonna be shut down because it was, it was getting very cold and the ground started freezing up, sure enough, things changed. The weather started getting okay, if you will, for this time of year, and they came in to get some minor things done. And trust me, they, they did do a whole lot of work.
It's not, from my experience, it's not uncommon in construction, especially in this time of year, that you shut down for a week because if the ground's frozen, typically you can't backfill because you have thaw and extra moisture in the hole, or, you know, a myriad of things, or the extra costs and rate of production for doing masonry walls. You just stop until it's warmer.
I got no problem with that.
You have to stop since December when it wasn't that cold.
Well, but for a con, from a contractor, and I don't know if this is a union contractor or not, but for a lot of the union rules, what you have is if he works either side on a day, either side of a holiday, he's responsible for paying that person for the holiday. If they work on the holiday, it's double time for that holiday. So given that they fell on, I believe, what, Tuesdays this year, or Mondays the holidays, he might have opted for shut down for the last two weeks in December, or else I have to pay for days that people aren't working and days that people don't want to be there because they want to be home with their families. So these sorts of things always play into construction contracts, but.
I, I understand that point. I don't think that needs to be really harped on. I just don't understand, last meeting, we were told it's normal procedure for projects like this to shut down until March. We were told that, and that's not what we're being told today. That's all, my point I'm trying to make is that, what's true here? That it's going to be shut down till March, or that throughout the winter, we might open and close, which is, makes sense, and I understand that, but we were told the wrong thing last month. Am I not correct?
I heard that also two weeks ago. I believe that if they get some moderate weather, they'll go out there and do what they can.
That's fine.
To keep, to keep the project moving, because once they get, once we finalize everything with the, with the structure and everything, if it's moderate weather, I think they're gonna want to start getting footings in, and, and you could put up a steel building in cold weather. So it's, it's the foundation, it's the footings that matter. So if it's moderate weather, they can get footings in the ground, I, I think that they'll do that.
Not, not a problem. I just am a person who's not in the construction background, and when the Borough Engineer, or the VA, or the architect, or the project coordinator tell us that it's shut down for the winter, I, I don't, you know, I just got confused. You know, that's not the right information that came around this, this week.
Well, didn't Mike two weeks ago also say that it was based upon the weather? If we have warm days, it's possible they would start up again.
Last meeting, we were told it's shut down for the winter.
Well, I thought towards the end of his conversation, he mentioned.
Not, not from my recollection.
The way it's been, it's been that way since darn summer, up and down, up and down anyway.
You can take a poll up here if you like, Councilwoman Kerber, and I bet you, everybody up here will think that that project was shut down for the winter.
Randy, I've got another question for you. The architect, I understand he's been providing a report monthly. He goes out to the site, takes some pictures, and writes that up. What are we paying for that report to be generated every month?
I believe the contract price is eighty-two hundred and fifty dollars.
We pay eighty, eighty-two hundred dollars for the architect to go out. Now, is, is his pictures and, and information that he's providing in that report, does it necessarily pertain to the architect's scope of work, which from my understanding is the building footprint up, not necessarily the site work and retaining walls?
I would agree one hundred percent.
Is that contract cancelable until we actually start doing work that pertains to the architect? Which is the footings, foundation, structural elements? I mean, it seems silly that we're spending eight thousand dollars a month for an architect to be out there taking pictures and saying, this is great, they're doing site work. I mean, if, if he was out there saying, wait a second, the window's in the wrong place, that's something. But eight grand a month for a couple of pictures?
I would agree with you, and I'm gonna defer to council on whether, I mean, it is in the contract that we approve that they start with. in the contract that we approve that they start with the award of contract to the contractor, that they start inspections.
We certainly can look into it because, you know, need more information both with respect to the specific contract provision and also with respect to what is and is not being done now.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to-
I can look into that.
Because I understand the Project Coordinator does, he, he's coordinating between Architect, you know, the Site Contractor, CME, and the other things that are going on, but if we are, if we're paying an Architect to go out there and simply take pictures of someone else doing your retaining wall, which he didn't design or have really any oversight over, I don't see the purpose in that. It's, seems like a waste of money.
Well, wouldn't that be nice to have in the report? How many times the Architect went out and took pictures?
Well, we do, we get that Architecture Report, it's twelve pages of pictures.
Well, but I don't get it in the Special Projects Coordinator's report. That's the only, that's the word, that's how we're getting our information about what's going on in the project.
But in, in previ, at previous council meetings, we've been given a thirteen, fourteen-page document, which is-
We have.
Two pictures per page and it's from the Architect saying, "The site's been cleared."
What, not in the year that I've been here. It was in, um-
Okay. In any event, I think eight thousand dollars a month is a way. So, if we can look into canceling that until they actually start constructing the building.
The plans for the Architect haven't even been finalized yet.
Correct.
So, how can they be acting on something that hasn't even been finalized yet?
You have to look at the agreement, the agreement that, um, when I say this council, the, the council at the time, uh, the contract called for inspections from the award of the contract to the general contractor. We awarded that contract. Even though the, the Architect drawings aren't finalized, we, this, the town, the town, uh, the Borough awarded that contract to McCollum. And that's when the inspections from the Architect started. I've had arguments with-
But I've probably changed con, Architect.
This is the new Architect. This is the contract with the new Architect. And, uh, the, um, I've, I've argued with the Architect to no prevail. I think in, in one-
Of course not, he's getting money out of it.
I think, and, and one day, I think the ladies in my office left because they heard things being thrown around. Um, i- i- it's, to me, it's a waste of money. Architects on buildings, I, I'm paying CME to do the site work, who they should be doing the site work because they're the engineers, and an Architect that knows buildings. I, I, I don't, I didn't agree with this contract at all.
Neither did I.
Well, Mr. Bruder, Bruder and Mr. Barr, I think there's also meetings scheduled or tentatively scheduled to meet with these people and discuss what we're just talking about. Until that takes place and we get responses, we know what's going on.
We're gonna need that information.
Thank you.
Uh, I have another, I have a question, actually a couple of questions. So, we got this report and it says Site Contractors returned as of Wednesday, the twenty-third. How many days have they been there?
I do not know.
Okay. Doesn't say that, it just says they returned the twenty-third. Did they leave and lock the gates the twenty-third also? We don't know, right? Okay. How many meetings has the Special Projects Coordinator attended? Not in the report? No. So, to Councilman Revolinski's point about wasting money, so he got paid a thousand dollars for this month for showing up one day, if he showed up, to watch them offload some equipment? What coordination is that? I think the role of the Project Coordinator isn't just to monitor the work that's going on over there, but to make sure- Well, then, that should be in the report. That's why we ask for a report. Can I finish? And then you can shout at me? Is, part of his role is to make sure that the Architect is submitting plans over for review, that things are progressing smoothly, that the Contractor is aware of any architectural changes to negotiate some change orders, to fight on our behalf for things, and I agree, it's not in the report, and I certainly have that issue with him, but, uh, I, I think we're mistaken if we think that the Special Project Coordinator's role is simply to sit there and babysit the site. If, there's a lot more to it. And I know at the last meeting, we talked about finalizing plans so in the springtime we can really move forward with construction of the building, and I know, understand that takes time and he's been in meetings to discuss certain elements, uh, as well as the change order document. So, I will agree with you that the report is significantly lacking, but from my discussions with him, uh, there is a lot more work that is being done, so. Okay. So, again, it would be helpful if that was put into this report, so we can know what is actually, what exactly is being done.
Didn't we talk about having a template to fill out?
Yeah, and I completed it over this weekend, um, came into work, I got the, the, this report tonight. So, he will have that template.
So, you're gonna do the work to do the template to ask what he should fill in for his report?
Yep.
And that would include which meetings have occurred?
It would include meetings, it would include the contract, it would include, uh, a, a division of, of finance, the finances, it would include a section for the Architect. Each, each category, if you will, of, of a construction project. So, you know, meetings is, is one category, engineer, I mean, uh, Architect is another category, uh, the Contractor, general contractors, one financials or another.
Yeah, the fi, and the financial, what it's, uh, the change order is what we talked about the last time, right? Which you were involved in with the, the salt, the, um, salt thing and-
Yeah, they could, they could include that, um, you know, the original contract, how much has been, uh, built to date, how much has been paid to date and the remaining balance. And then if any change orders occur on top of that, uh, either the increase or decrease and same thing, what's been released, what's still-
But that comes from you, pretty much, because you're the one that's taking care of what's going in and out.
Well, he also reviews the, uh, and we have him review the invoices-
Okay.
-that we get for this project.
Right.
Okay. I'm, I'm just gonna make one comment, I really don't want rebuttal on it. We have a Project Coordinator that should be the quarterback. Most of his job is probably being done by either the Architect, the BA, the Borough Engineer, and he's supposed to be quarterback in this and giving us a full-fledged report. You know, we're gonna pay a Project Coordinator, there's no changing that, I'm, oh, you know, that's fine, you know, but let's get what we're paying for. We need a quarterback to handle all of this. I pretty, I think that's what Councilman Revolinski was trying to say, but, you know, in all honesty, we're not getting it right now, and I think everybody can agree on that. If he quarterbacks this and does it the right way for us, I'd have absolutely no problem, problem with it. We're, we're gonna pay him anyway, but we're not getting what we're paying for right now.
Next, the Department of Public Safety, chaired by Councilman Nicholas Plagati.
Thank you, Council President. The monthly police report from the Milltown Police Department. Between December fifth, two thousand and eighteen, and January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, police have answered one thousand three hundred and ninety-four calls for service. This number includes, but not limited to, nine-one-one and medical calls, traffic incidents, community outreach, walk-in reports, and public contacts. Police conducted a total of two hundred and ninety motor vehicle stops, which included special traffic enforcement details. Sixty-five radar details were conducted in various locations during this period. Police responded to twenty-five motor vehicle accidents and made nineteen arrests in which, which included shoplifting, domestic violence, theft, and warrant arrest. Patrolman Eric Hafner recently completed two weeks of specialized training and is now Certified Instructor for the Law Enforcement Against Drugs, LEAD program. The LEAD program has replaced the DARE program, so lead replaced DARE. Patrolman Hafner will be teaching the program with Joyce Kilma staff several days a week at J, JK Schools. Milltown Police Department officers continue to maintain all mandated training requirements and will continue to train and practice in the higher standards in law enforcement. As of January second, two thousand and nineteen, Milltown Police Officers are equipped with body-worn cameras. More information on body-worn cameras is available on the Milltown website, www.milltown.org. Police will continue strict enforcement of traffic laws including speeding, cell phone use, and pedestrian crawl, pedestrians in crosswalks. Milltown Police Department encourages residents to remain vigilant by calling and reporting any suspicious activity and traffic concerns to the Milltown Police Department at seven three two, eight two eight, one one zero zero. The Milltown Police Department is currently accepting applications for part-time public safety telecommunicators and crossing guards. Informations, information is available through the Police Department and is posted within Borough Hall. Thank you, Chief Brian Cannella. The Milltown Fire Department Month Report for January two thousand and nineteen. Number of total calls, six. Number of, number of training details, two. Number of work details, four. Number of meeting details, one. Total incidents, thirteen. Membership, new member Philip Palmer was approved at the one, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. And that concludes my report. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Utilities, here chaired by Councilman Trina Mayer.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I don't have a report from the, uh, Department Head, but I will just say that the Utilities Committee met, uh, last week. We had a really good discussion about, uh, personnel, uh, the transition to some new service contracts, and also we discussed the evaluation, which we talked about earlier in the agenda meeting, which we will follow up on after we speak to the auditor and everything, um, next month. So, I'll have a, a larger report then. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Public Works and Recycling, chaired by Dorian, Councilwoman Dorian Kerber.
Thank you, Council President. Along with all curbside collections, DPW has the following report. Public Works repaired a water main break on Crestwood Drive. Asphalt repair was done on the corner of Albert and West Fosh. Some ceiling tiles have been replaced at Senior Center. A shelf has been repaired and painted in the Utilities Office. Bathrooms have been painted at Albert Avenue Park. The solder has been out at various locations where needed. Public Works assisted the Utility Department by providing an operator and two laborers to locate a water leak on East Joffrey. Pot-hall repair is ongoing. A dangerous broken branch on Northbrook Drive was removed. A section of waterway at the end of Vanderbilt was cleared up to free. Sign repair has taken place at various locations around town. The Public Works Director plus one staff member attended the annual Middlesex County Municipal Recycling, excuse me, and Clean Communities Coordinators Meeting. Topics covered at this meeting were the current recycling crisis locally and globally. Discussions were also held about curbside recycling compliance. Please check milltownnewjersey.org for DPW updates as well as for news flashes. Please consider signing up for the Recycle Coach app, and this app will contain current schedules for your area. Also, please check Channel Fifteen for updates. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, chaired by Councilman Randy Parkes.
No report tonight, Council President.
Thank you. Next, from the Department of Recreation, chaired by Councilman Richard Revolinski.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I'll go through the standard report and, uh, we did have a meeting last week, so I'll give you some, uh, updates on that, but along with daily operations, deposits, registrations, billings, et cetera, the Recreation and SAC Department have the following. SAC reminders, a SAC parent reminder letter has gone out to all parents. If you had not submitted your sign-off sheet, please be sure to do so immediately. This is a mandatory form from the state. Please help us stay compliant. Um, in summation, that's just, uh, if this happens to my child, if that happens to my child, I give SAC permission to do this, to do that. Takes two seconds to initial every line and send it on back, so please do that. As a reminder, if schools close early for an emergency or for weather, there will be no PM SAC. I say this every month, and I guess I'll keep saying it, if there is a delayed opening, there is no AM SAC. If after-school activities are canceled by the Board of Ed due to weather, there will be no after-school SAC. Please be sure to have a plan in place for your child at dismissal. There will be no SAC staff on-site to receive your child. Please be sure to review your plan with your child. Recreation information, youth basketball, there has been some schedule changes with midweek practices and Saturday games due to a change in Board of Ed schedules of the facility. A revised schedule has gone out, and if you have not received it, please contact your child's coach for an updated schedule. The Recreation Department is now accepting all part-time seasonal employment, uh, applications for the Albert Avenue Summer Rec Program, Summer SAC Program, and for the Borough Pool. Even if you have worked for the Borough in previous years, you must reapply. All applicants must be fifteen-year-old, fifteen-years-old by March thirty-first, and all applications are due by March first. So, we're looking at about a month here, people. Recreation Committee will meet on Wednesday, February twentieth, at seven PM. And we had a nice meeting, Julie and I, uh, got together and discussed the plans for uh, this year for the Recreation and SAC programs, what we'd like to see improved and how it would go about doing it. Um, we've submitted a report over to the Business Administrator, and, uh, hopefully he will pass some of that information along to the Finance Committee as well because we've got some issues with, uh, staffing that I think we need to address finally to make SAC and, uh, the Recreation Programs run more smoothly. Uh, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is old business. Does any member of the Council have any old business to bring before the Council?
Yes, uh, Council President, what's the status of the Business Administrator position? Has it been posted?
Yes, it's, uh, posted. We have some resumes that I will be forwarding on to the Personnel Committee.
Okay.
And as, as they, as those resumes come in, we'll, we'll forward them on to the Personnel Committee on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other old business?
Yep, just a, just a quick question. Do we have any, uh, a report on Ford Avenue? What's going on on Ford Avenue?
I don't have any report.
I did not have, I was not provided with a report. I was going to talk to Mr. Bruder, as I know that there's legal meetings going on that are not public, publicly discussed yet. Am I correct?
Most of the, uh, I give a report as a liaison, um, at a member of the Ford Ave Redevelopment Agency. Uh, most of the meeting was, uh, closed session matters regarding litigation. Um, there is a request to revisit some of the redevelopment agreement as it stands now, and I believe you're on board for that on Wednesday, where we'll be meeting with the developer to review some plans. Uh, thank you for that update, but I was referring to the garbage and the rubble that's on the site now? I wasn't referring to the redevelopment of the, I was- That still is the responsibility of the property owner, and while this remains in litigation, it appears as though we're gonna get very little help from him, uh, especially considering the last, uh, court case decision wasn't necessarily granted in his favor. Um, it, the responsibility for site cleanup falls on the redeevelper, so it doesn't appear as though the current property owner is gonna do much, if anything, to cleaning, clean up or tidy up the property as long as he's in compliance with Borough ordinances. So, I think we, we should probably ask, uh, our zoning or Code Enforcement official to just confirm if there's any outstanding violations or if any of the violations that he's issued in the past for that facility, uh, have not been, what, what's the proper term here, amended, addressed, resolved? Over the bottom.
There you go. Is there any other old business?
May I just follow up on Councilwoman Kerber's question? So, uh, Mr. Barr, you said that you forward the resumes to the Personnel Committee, which is kinda new, so is there a timeframe to act on, uh, on those? I mean, is there, uh, do we have a certain time that we're accepting resumes and have a certain time to do the interviews and, you know, what's the expectation for that?
I would think that the advertisement will run on the LEAK website, uh, where you're probably gonna get most of the respondents from-
Right.
-until the middle of February, February twenty-first, around, right around there. Um, but we can, um, certainly look at resumes while, when they come in.
Right.
Uh, we can certainly, if, if the Personnel Committee feels there's qualified candidates, we can certainly interview those candidates. Uh, there's no, there's no obligation for us to hold the job open until the end of, until the end of that advertisement.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're, we're acting on in a timely manner.
Right, and that's why I wanna forward those resumes on to the Personnel Committee as we get them.
Okay.
Because usually in the beginnings of- Because usually in the beginnings of years with change of governing bodies and everything, there is a transition of administrators and BAs.
Okay.
So.
Great.
This is a good time, actually, to be going out.
Right.
We've actually, right before this, discussed with Mr. Barr about receiving those and distributing them as they come in, so we don't wind up in the same situation we had with the CFO.
Exactly. Right, thank you.
I have two things for old business. Number one is the recycling, and Dorian, I'm going to pass this off to you. I received an email from a resident about Solterra, who contracts with the county, has the capability, or at least advertises, that they recycle many more items than they currently take in from Borough of Milltown. This resident has asked me to take some action on this, simply because their outreach to the county has received no response. So I imply that it's most likely the county contract with Solterra that indicates the items we collect and the ones that we don't, but this particular resident is curious as to why we're not collecting all the items for recycling that we possibly could be doing.
Well, just to let you know, I've lived in other counties. Also, I've worked in other counties. Middlesex County recycles the least amount of plastics. Most other counties will do, you know, you've got plastic numbers one through seven. Sometimes it's three or five, or three or seven that they don't recycle. There's many counties that even recycle styrofoam. I don't know why the county hasn't put this on. I will be going to a meeting, wow, it's tomorrow night, right? Yeah, tomorrow night. So I will be addressing that with some of the county officials at this meeting and see where I can go from that.
Thanks.
So I'll give you an update in February, because I'd like to know. I know Ralph has also tried to move forward with other things, but I don't understand why Middlesex County has always been limited to number one or number two plastics. It's just amazing that we haven't expanded that program.
My other matter of old business, and I just want to touch on this, is the tree contract. I spoke to Gabriella earlier, and it seems that this governing body had given consent to enter into contract with the bidder, the only bidder, for the tree removal, and I have some real hesitation with that. One being that it's a time and materials contract, in that if the contractor feels he needs a crane on-site in Milltown, he can just bring a crane every day, and bam, we pay him for it. The other thing is the amount of oversight required by Borough staff to administer this contract. If we don't have personnel out there from the DPW monitoring how much this person's getting done and setting the standards for, okay, it's an eight-inch diameter tree, or twenty-four-inch diameter tree, or fifty feet tall, how much should we expect to get done in a day? What's reasonable, what's not? I don't think we're going to get the most bang for our buck, and I think that's evident in the fact that we really did only receive one bid and one proposal on this contract. So I would make a motion that this governing body revisit that award and possibly go out for a rebid, amending to what I thought was a more solid plan of action, which is a bid based on size of tree and whether or not it's in the power lines, which seem to be the only variables in what would be a difference in cost. I'm concerned that we're not going to have the impact on the number of trees on the list that need to be removed in the current contract form.
I would just respond and say, before we, the Council takes any action, I'd like to look through the bid specs as well as the contract.
I would suggest that the BA and our Public Works Director weigh in on this, because it's their project, and I think they're the ones that are either going to be able to say, we can do this job, or we can't do this job. And to my knowledge right now, they've said that they can do this job based on that one particular bid, doing the oversight and stuff like that, but if they come back and say something different, I would totally agree with you. But I think that those two fellows should really weigh in heavily on what we do next.
Well, agreed. I just think we should be aware that it's a time and materials, and typically, and again, speaking from my experience in construction, and Randy, I know you've got construction experience as well, that when you can come to an agreement in regards to a price on a change order, the go-to is time and materials, and the contractor likes to drag his feet a little bit and make some extra money on it, because it's all time, material, plus markup.
But when we approved it, we knew that it was time and material. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I honestly was unaware. I thought we were going with a contract based on criteria.
Did we approve a contract time and material? Yes. So why, we approved it in November. Why the change of opinion now?
Well, I wasn't aware of it, to be honest. I thought we were going on with the criteria that we had discussed up here, which was, you know, diameter, location, whether or not it was in the trees, or the utility lines, and the fact that we only got one bidder. It just scares me. And I had some discussions over the past week, and it just, it's come to my attention that there's going to be a significant amount of oversight to make sure we're getting our dollars' worth, and who's going to do that? Because that's going to add cost to the Borough operations as well.
Yeah, what if they come in on Saturday? They decide to do that? That's on the, isn't that in that as well? They have a choice to come on Saturdays, and we're spending overtime?
It's not a choice, it's their...
It's an option.
We put in a contract, the hourly wages for weekends and holidays, so that way if there was a reason for them to come in on a weekend or holiday, we had the option to enlist them at that point, but the intent of the contract was to map out the logistics with the Department of Public Works Supervisor, and it would be during regular working hours, Monday through Friday, so that they could monitor and oversee this project.
And then also, when we always have an emergency, it's just like I keep reading, what if you have a water main break? He's taking away from that. So he's not standing there watching them make sure they get the work done. There's a lot of situations with all the...
Mr. Barr, is the expectation that Ralph is going to oversee every single minute of this gentleman's time?
He would oversee the project, yeah.
Absolutely not.
It's a reputable company that we do extensive business with.
Yeah, we have a reputable company. We have a fabulous Public Works Director that knows his job, that would have a very good idea of how long it should take for trees to come down and so forth. As far as being called away on a water main break, I would not expect the Public Works Director to be in the hole repairing a water line. He may stop by, make sure things are moving along, and then continue. His job is to monitor and supervise all the crews. So he is not only in the building, but around town with different projects going on.
So I understand your concern. However, we approved in November the time and materials contract. I mean, I was actually a little frustrated, because I thought when we approved it, that it was going to move forward, because we had talked about getting a better deal in the winter, that it would be a savings if we started. So we had a mild December, and not a terrible January, and now we're going into February, and we still haven't started yet. And now, if we're going to go back and revisit it again, we're going to be into the summer, so we'll be one full year until we first through this act.
But you asked, yeah.
When we sort of let, got people's hopes up in November, when we finally said, okay, we're going to have a contract to do, to start tree removal. So that would be my concern, is that if we revisit this again, this is going to push us back another four or five months.
And quite frankly, I'd be more content with it being pushed back four or five months than to not get as many trees out as we could, or put an additional burden on our existing staff. It's my understanding that we still don't even have the contract executed between ourselves and the tree service that bid on this. So we still haven't gotten anywhere, which is, you know, a little bit alarming as well. More so, you know...
Was that on us, or is that on the tree service? I mean...
Well, I asked Gabriella in between the break here, you know, I don't understand why we still don't have a contract. In my experience, you bid on a contract, the contract's awarded you the low bidder, and bam, you start the work, everything's there. I don't quite understand why we don't have a contract in place. I mean, wouldn't it be, here's my bid based on the contract? Sign your pages, I sign mine, not write a project at this time, or a contract at this time?
There's no pages in a bid specification for contract designation. After every bid, there's additional documents that are usually transferred, and that we sign off on. So that's what we were waiting for, which tree service did not have a draft contract, because their contracts are with the state mostly, and that's a state contract, which is very different than ours. So we reached out to Northbrook, who's also contracted with them, and it took them a little while to get us the package, because it was quite large, and they've just sent it to us, and we're going through it currently to write up and draft our own.
So essentially, we're drafting a contract after the bid? I don't get it. Everything I've ever bid has always been, and I understand this is a tree service and an RFP versus a construction contract with outline things, but, you know, you see items that are line items, not lump sums, but bid item or unit items, unit bid items, and it's an if and where directive, you know, an open-ended time and materials contract that the language isn't even agreed upon yet scares me.
Well, contracts are always done after bids. Contracts are never done prior to bids or at the same time as bids.
For this type of service?
It was a bid that we went out for, so, yeah.
But I mean, I don't want to, when I'm saying contract, I'm saying the language, not necessarily, like, you know, you have your bid documents, which essentially become your contract once they're all executed, but don't we have the bid documents, aren't they becoming the contract?
They will be, the specific, yeah, the criteria that's in the specifications will become part of the contract. So that, those items, as far as, you know, dollars and work timeframes and everything else, is part of a contract.
And that was all in the bid documents?
Correct.
Mr. Barr, do you have any concern about the way that it stands now, whether we can get the majority of our work done by this contractor?
I mean, I was, I was quite surprised, actually, that we only did get one bid. I thought we would get more bids. There's quite a few tree services out there, so I was surprised at that. You know, there's two ways, two main ways you could do tree specifications, time and material, or by diameter of trees that need to be done.
But given your work with the DPW chief, you think you could make a pretty good dent into what we have with this contract?
Oh, I believe so. I believe so. I think we can schedule the trees in a very economic way that we could get the most bang for a dollar for time.
I have a question. As far as cost of concerns, or hidden costs, or costs that might, the Borough Public Works Department might incur, however you want to think of whatever scenario that would come possible, if it has to do with these trees or this company, if we had to pay out of that particular money that is put aside for that, is that doable? That it didn't cost the Borough any additional money? It can be taken out of there?
Certainly.
So that would cover any concerns I think Councilman Revelinsky might have on additional costs?
I'm concerned about the efficiency of the dollar on this one, where the contractor comes into town, he uses the, let's say there's a line item in there for use of a crane, and by the time he brings the crane into town, he gets paid for that crane.
Right.
Now, let's say he gets half the tree down in the first day, and he only needs the crane for an hour, but it's a day rate for the crane, so why not just leave it there for the next day? I just made extra money.
I think that question, great.
He could certainly try that, and we'll deny, we'll deny it.
Right.
You know, we're not going to allow him to bring a crane in if a crane isn't needed.
I just feel that that level of oversight is going to become very cumbersome on the DPW staff, unless there's someone else that I don't know of that's going to be overseeing this contract.
I think that question was asked and answered, in that it's a reputable company that this Borough has been dealing with for, I'm going to say decades, because it's more than ten years. And you have a very, very good DPW Director that is going to oversee it. So that question, to me, has been asked and answered twice now. I don't think that the company that successfully bid and was granted this award would do that to Milltown. Doesn't say that they wouldn't, but I would be very confident in going with what our Business Administrator and our Public Works Director would recommend on this particular job.
Is there any other old business? If not, I'll close old business and go on to new business. Does any member of the Council have any new business to bring before Council? Hearing none, we'll close new business, we'll go on to audience comments. Public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the Council's attention their concerns and comments. The Council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. If a member of the public has questions that they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during regular business hours, or with a member of Council during their allotted office meeting hours. Any member of the audience has any comment? Please state your name and address for the record when you come up to the podium.
Good evening. Russ Einbinder, two twenty B South Main Street. I'm here on behalf of, first of all, the Fourth of July Committee. Want to thank everybody that showed up at our karaoke night last week. It was wonderful. We actually had our biggest night ever for that. Thank you very much. And yes, the people that are asking, we are going to have fireworks this year. I promise you. Okay, we're going to have them. In fact, hopefully bigger, better than ever. That's number one. Number two, for this time of year, this coming Saturday is February second, also known as Groundhog Day, and Council President, I know you'll be there up on stage with me. You've got those nice warm clothes, you've got that big, long, black coat. Oh, I like your coat better than mine. Mel is going to be here. Actually, Mel is already here. He's sleeping behind Bronson Nutline right now. He's still kind of almost awake, and he's asking to get the kids up early on Saturday. He knows it's tough, but we'll give them lots of, you know, donuts and stuff afterwards. They can go, you know, stay up for a little while, go back, take an afternoon nap maybe, okay? I realize it's a Saturday, and it's hard for some people, but for other people, it's a great thing. They can't make it normally, so it should balance out. It should be a wonderful time, and next year it's Super Bowl Sunday. It's going to be even crazier, so. We look forward to seeing you there. I look forward myself to hearing Mel saying that we're going to have a very short winter. And last, and not least, I want to remind people...
What time for Milltown, Mel?
What?
What time?
Oh, I'm sorry. I tell people to gather no later than seven, a little before seven. About twenty after seven is when he does a prediction, about quarter after he starts marching in and doing that whole thing. So, you know, the whole thing's over at like seven forty-five. You're out, you're home. I mean, you're gone, so like eight, at the latest. The other thing is for the Chamber of Commerce, and Dorian, don't we forget, we have, I just want people to know, we are having our regular meetings, but the meetings, the little special social meetings we've been having at the Garden State Bar have worked out well. And our newest business in Milltown, the Coffee Bar, just recently opened, you may know, and he's graciously offered for next Tuesday our regular scheduled morning meeting, next, I'm sorry, next Wednesday, the sixth. Eight-thirty in the morning is our regularly scheduled monthly meeting there, and the following Tuesday at five P.M. will be at the Garden State Bar in the evening. So I want people to know about that, because there's a lot of good things going on with business in Milltown. They're trying to give back and get more involved in the community, so we want to make sure you're aware of it, and if there's things that you need that the business can help you with, you let me, or Dorian, or any of the other officers that are in the chamber know, and we'll be glad to help. Thank you.
If I may expand one thing on what you said, Russ?
Yes, sir.
I've been contacted by the county. The county will be there on Saturday to videotape the entire thing to place on the county website.
Not only that, you're absolutely right, and I spoke to her a couple of times, you know, and she's actually interviewing me and John tomorrow, and Channel twelve is too, and Channel four, a lot of people are going to be commenting, hopefully from the media, because it seems to be gathering of steam more and more every year. Got it, thank you.
Any other audience comments? If not, move on to Council. I'm sorry.
Phil Zembrandt at Forty Van Lu Avenue. So I just want to say that I support, and I have no problem or concern with our DPW Director Ralph Janizowski or Mr. Barr coordinating the tree removal and trimming project. Literally now, after having spent the last year and a half discussing whether you could take money and use it for tree trimming or removal from the PSE and G money settlement, the settlement money, now is not the time to start making different terms, or looking at contracts, or pulling back things. Now is the time to keep moving forward, as Councilman Mayer said, to make sure that some of this work gets done. Whether you have to wait for the contractor to forward a contract of any kind, that's fine. Keep moving forward, because if you don't, you're going to be sitting here at the end of July and August, and you're still going to be in the same place. Just want to have a question about the tree removal again. Has there been a finalized list that the DBW Director will be going off of?
Yes, of course. Yes, of course. There will be a list. I've got an update. I have another application in.
There is a list.
Absolutely.
That he has.
That he has.
Good, okay.
Correct, absolutely.
Additional costs, or someone to supervise at this point, I mean, what are you going to do? Are you going to like, appoint a special projects coordinator just for the tree removal? That's going to be more waste of money. I have no doubt that Ralph can take care of this. Speaking of special projects coordinators, so Mr. Barr, it looks like you've been tasked with receiving his report by the mayor, from the mayor, and facilitating it towards the council, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so do you get it the day of? Do you get it over the weekend? You know, how much more in advance do you get it?
I'm going to talk with the person and change those dates. I've been getting them the day of the meeting. Unfortunately, I'm not here on Mondays.
Right, right. So for the next meeting, which is February 11th, when do you think he'll send it? He'll send it like the 8th, the 9th?
The 11th. So the 8th is at Thursday, that's why I'd like to get them by.
Okay, okay. Will he be here to give the update, or will you just continue to do that?
He will be in attendance at the next meeting.
For sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of the reason that we have questions is because we don't see it until we get here.
Right. Especially if he's probably using some of the information that's already been gathered by the architect, and again, waste of money here, fellas, folks. You need to figure out a way to save money here, not to pay twice for the same thing. Thank you.
Any other audience comments? If not, I'll close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of council have anything else they wish to bring up at this time?
I do. First, I'd like to remind everyone, the next meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee is this Wednesday, January 30th, at 7:30 PM, right here in Council Chambers. I know it's going to be a cold night, but please come out, because this is especially important. We're going to take everything that we worked on at the first meeting, all of the ideas, and group them together into achievable goals for the town that we will, 7:30 PM, here in Council Chambers. It's on the calendar, it's on the website. Council President Dixon, everything's been on the calendar as planning. Are you available to come on Wednesday night?
This Wednesday night, I would have to check. I may have a prior commitment.
Because we're sort of, Councilman Revolinski and Mayor Seaver were there at the last one.
You can't have more than three.
Correct. So I just wanted to make sure while we're here, that we have who's coming, right?
I will do my damnedest, but I do have to check. What time is it?
7:30.
I'd like to attend the next one, if I can volunteer.
Okay. So we'll circle around, you know, to make sure that there's only the three, okay?
Will you be giving updates to notes to the rest of the council?
Yes, yes. Well, I sent out the notes the last time, the minutes, actually, Mayor Seaver did that, yes. So we'll have a scribe at this one, and actually, the stuff that comes out of this meeting will come to the council as our strategic plan goals. And then if you're really interested in something, so if you're, one of the goals would be, I don't know, whatever, Goal A, if you're really interested in that, then you can, you know, be on that committee to examine how we can further achieve those goals. So that'll be on Wednesday at 7:30. And I did mention the website, I just wanted to mention quickly that I've gotten several questions about why things aren't posted on Facebook anymore, for people looking for information. And in the fall, we passed our social media policy, saying that the borough wouldn't do borough business through social media. However, people that came to rely on certain Facebook pages have wondered where to go for their information. The ideal would be the source of all the information about the borough is the borough website. However, I will say that there are some pages that haven't been updated enough to reflect the information that used to be on Facebook. There's a few departments that need to catch up, and we, the BA, the clerk, and we are all aware of that, and we'll get that up to speed. So that way, going forward, instead of having the notifications on Facebook, they will be on the website. There will be some things that you can, if you're interested in, you can sign up for alerts. If there's something on the newsflash, you can get an alert for that as well. And we'll, once everything is up to where it should be, we will tell you just how to go about doing that. But it should be that the website is the true source of information about all borough business. Thank you.
Any other council comments?
I do a personal one. I don't like to look at my phone during council meetings, but I looked at my phone, and my daughter, who is a senior at Stockton University, is watching our council meeting on their big screen with her class, so I'd like to have a shout-out to my daughter, Elizabeth Legati.
Well, I don't think that's right, but congratulations, thank you. Is there any other council comments?
Sure, if we're going to get personal. Babe, sorry, I know, your birthday again, love you, I'm here. Should be home in about five minutes, hopefully.
Good word, Mo. Any other council comments? If not, I'm going to move on to mayor comments, I have one comment or statement. On January 21st, Mayor Seaver and myself were invited to the Westfield Armory to see 179 young men and women be deployed going overseas. The reason we were invited was there are several from our town that are part of that, and for their privacy, and some requested that we don't even say where they're going. I would just say, Godspeed on behalf of the council, wish them well. If there's anything we can do, please reach out. And that is my mayor's comments on behalf of Mr. Mayor Seaver, who was going to bring that up tonight. Nothing else, I'll ask for the German.
Make a motion for a German.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Out of here.
Mayor.
Yes.
Off the board outside, red white blue sticker. 19th of February.
He warned me earlier. He warned me earlier in the day, and he's coming in at 8:00.